Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Risky. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mrs. Hernandez. Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to start out reminding everyone that the Sterling Heights Police Department is once again hosting the Law Enforcement Day, which will be on Tuesday, August 6th, from 6:30 to 9:00 PM. That's right in front of the police department. And for those of you who have been there, you know what it's like. It's a lot of fun. We have a lot of kids that show up and families, and it's fun for everyone. The event will include demonstrations of public safety equipment, displays from the police and fire departments. Emergency service personnel will speak to residents about established volunteer programs like our Citizens Emergency Response Team, better known as CERT, our Neighborhood Watch and Citizens on Patrol, better known as COPS. And there'll be various prizes, raffles, refreshments, and so on. So again, that's actually on the night of our next city council meeting. That's August 6th, from 6:30 to 9:00 PM. And, as many of you know, we're diligently working on a reforestation of the city under our sustainability efforts, and more to come on that topic, but specifically as it relates to reforestation. I'm pleased to announce that we have a significant donation from ITC. Each year, ITC funds a program called Right Tree, Right Place, and this is the third year in a row that we've received funding through this program stemming from an agreement with ITC to remove trees in overgrowth in the South Clinton River Park that would be potentially harmful to the overhead distribution lines. With prior funds, we have replaced trees at the Skate Park, Hampton Park, as well as new trees at Arlingdale and Dodge Park. The new $6,000 that they'll be donating will go towards tree plantings at Baumgartner in the parking lot and by athletic fields, as well as some strategic plantings at Meadowview Park, which is in a historically wet area, and these trees, of course, help dry out those areas. So you can look forward to some of those plantings, but I thought it was noteworthy to mention our efforts once again in that area. And at this point, Mayor, if you don't mind, I would like to introduce our DPW director who would like to talk about an item on the consent agenda, and that's accepting the bids from a contractor for construction of a new DPW building. And also our finance and budget director will talk about the financing of that project. But we'll start out with our DPW director, Mike Moore.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of council, residents at home, and those in the audience. As the city manager, Mark Vanderpool, stated, tonight's consent agenda is the approval for the construction of a new DPW building. So just by the way of a bit of background, our current building is slated to celebrate its 45th anniversary here in the next two years without any major improvements or upgrade to the building. So it's in dire need of some kind of improvement or upgrade. As we had mentioned at a previous council meeting before, there's a lot of concerns we have about the building that got us to this point. From this photo, you can see here, one ingress and egress, this is our building, one ingress and egress out of the building, as you can see by the green arrows. And this red area here is where all the staff is housed and their offices, and in the yellow is where the mechanics are. So the concern we have is that everybody's exposed to the vehicle gases and things when all the vehicles are parked along the perimeter of the building here. And anytime the vehicles start up in the morning or the afternoon or after breaks, they emit the exhaust gases throughout the whole building, especially for the mechanics who, we don't have the right-sized break room, which you'll see soon, and all the mechanics eat lunch in their lap. So as the trucks are driving through, you can imagine all the fumes going over everybody as they're trying to eat lunch. So major concern for us. A few pictures here, you can see some infrastructure issues. Some of the, I mean, some of this stuff here, you can see right through the wall. These are two separate pictures. One of the supervisors here in the upper left has a sanitary structure in his office, so you can imagine the fumes are emitted when he's trying to conduct business. And as mentioned here, our break room comfortably seats about 12 to 15. We have a department of, with supervisors, all of our staff, about 85. And for us to have a departmental training or a departmental discussion, which we had just the other day, I had to shut the whole building down, and we were just kind of standing around in the shop and shouting at each other to be able to communicate. So really not ideal for our type of profession and looking for something that'll house our staff a lot better and be more productive. So council blessed us about a year ago with the opportunity to forego our look into the design of a new building, and we brought to council, and luckily council awarded to us the architectural firm, Cooney Architects, and one of the owners who we've been working with very diligently, John Wallencamp, is here in the audience. And John, myself, and our whole entire team really did a lot of work with the entire department and designed this building. So the building was designed to what the staff wants, and some of the staff is actually here in support of the building. And it was the staff who really designed this building. And a picture of the folks here that really put in the hard work throughout every day as well as designed this building, and they informed John and myself and the team of the desires they have, the desires they don't have, to put into the new building. Some of those items happen to be a new parking facility that's completely separate from where the fleet maintenance garage is. This area back here is actually the current structure we have now, and we're going to reuse 100% of that steel. So what we now have is a separation between where the vehicles park and where the mechanics work on the vehicles, so that exhaust gas is separated. Another item of highly desirable is, as I mentioned, the break room. So we're excited to be able to not only have department-wide training and/or divisional training, but also kind of be the industry leader in southeast Michigan for DPW. Well, we think we're the industry leaders in southeast Michigan. But it'll be great for us, you know, all joking aside, to be able to, you know, invite other DPWs to our building and hold trainings there, and of course, any other departments that want to have trainings, by all means, come use the new conference room. An overhead view of the building, as you see here, a blue picture is our current facility, and this project will be phased. So we will all stay in our current facility as it is, and the new portion of the building will be built here in red. So while this red portion's under construction, everybody stays in the blue area, and there'll be zero interruptions to service to the public. Once the red portion is done, we'll all squeeze into there, we'll make it work for about six to nine months, and then when the blue portion's done, we can all spread back out. So a couple items to note in this picture here are going to be alternates that I'll discuss briefly. One of the alternates that you see here is going to be this area here, which is the old athletic storage building and the tow yard. We're going to revise the tow yard and the athletic storage building, where now the tow company and police department will share that building. So there's some advantages to this building reconstruction for everybody. The tow yard will now have an office, we'll scrap the construction trailer, and the police department now has an area to do fatal inspections, so we have their support. A couple other items of note for the alternates is salt brining area here. We do have a salt brining operation. It's minimal at best, but this will give us increased snow fighting operations. Covered storage, DEQ, or now as they're called Eagle, really has a lot of mandates on when we have our cold materials outside and the rain gets on them and gets into the storm drains, big no-no. So we need those areas to be covered. The salt barn will put lean-to's on both sides to house existing equipment outside. As I mentioned, this facility here, currently, we're doing our best to work on the ambulances, but it's really, we're really not equipped to do that. Building this new structure, we can now, without a doubt, work on ambulances and the ladder trucks. Right now, ladder trucks is kind of hit or miss. We have to pull everything out of the shop. So now we'll have the right facility to work on the equipment. And then lastly, here is a vehicle weigh scale, so that we can not only weigh the salt trucks, make sure we're within parameters and it's safe, but also police department, when they do their enforcement out on the road, now they can bring them to our facility. Quick, see you, bye. In our effort to design this building, John did a great job with our team, and we really tried to go green as best as we could. We institute a lot of different things that were of green infrastructure. For example, we're reusing 100% recycled steel and portion of our building, 80% natural light to all areas, low-maintenance landscaping, so we focused as best as we could while being cost-efficient to have a green building. Just a rendering here of the exterior. So we worked with our own staff, and everybody did a great job. And then we had to reach out to our other colleagues. So a special thanks goes out to the names you see here, IT, building, planning, engineering, FD, PD, purchasing, everybody really helped out. Since we started this project and council gave us the opportunity to go down this path, we've kind of been an open book. We want everybody's help, we've kept no secrets. We, this can't be successful without everybody being involved. So we designed the building to the best of our ability. We had everybody you see on the screen review it. They gave us back some feedback, some comments. We critiqued it, we sent it back to them, they did a second review, and they gave us back our scope, our specs again. So at that rate, we had everything finalized, and we did bid this project out in June. So the bids came back, and the low bidder was LaSalle Incorporated. As you see here, their base bid was $18.97 million to reconstruct this building. The alternates here that we're asking for council's approval to award takes us to a total tonight, award of $20,130,000. Those set alternates are a vehicle wash bay. You have to imagine, when the salt truck drivers are out or any of the operators are out there and using their equipment to come back and to wash their equipment with a power washer and get underneath and lay on their back and get a ladder and go on top takes an enormous amount of time. So a drive-through touchless vehicle wash bay will really make, really speed things up and be a lot more efficient for staff. As I mentioned, the covered storage for the cold materials, lean-to's on the side of the salt barn where we can put construction bales, target arrows, revising of the tow yard, increased salt brining operation for snow fighting, and decanter pits where we drop the sanitary and the street sweepers has to be covered as well per Eagle. So LaSalle. So the one interesting thing I wanted to mention about LaSalle, as you see, some of their clients that they've had here, I've done a lot of reference checking in my career, and generally you get good feedback. The interesting point that I'd like to make note of with LaSalle is everybody kind of really went above and beyond to explain how well LaSalle did and how much they go, their go-to. So it was interesting to see that everybody we called really took the extra time and effort to say how good of a job this company has done. Some recent projects they have completed or are in progress that are similar to ours are this US Army Support Maintenance Shop. You can see that, that's similar to like our fleet garage, $19 million project, 93,000 square feet, a couple General Motors large projects on the bottom left, Motor City Casino at the cost of $80 million, over 500,000 square feet. Walmart Stores is a big client of LaSalle, and from what I gather, they're extremely strict on their policies and procedures when building their buildings. And another municipal building, Y and D Police Department. A couple others that are similar of like and kind would be Detroit Diesel Corporation. Judging by the pictures, you can see that it'd be similar to our type of garage, especially with the excavation that would be required. And another one here where there's an existing building for another maintenance facility that they had to work around to build the new areas. One great note, item of note for LaSalle is their supplier diversity, where they make an effort for minority, women, disadvantaged, veteran-owned businesses. So for us, it was, it was great to see they're not just out there trying to get the lowest dollar, they're actually doing the right thing behind the scenes, which leads us to believe that if they're doing the right thing behind the scenes, they're doing the right things whether we're around or not, which is very comforting for us. In discussions with LaSalle, we believe that more than 50% of the labor will be conducted by a union workforce. LaSalle does employ a lot of its own labor that will work on this shop, and they're all union members, as well as those that they'll subcontract would be union members as well too. So this is one thing I really wanted to key on. Myself and Mike Vazancow, the building official for the city of Sterling Heights, we did a site visit to one of LaSalle's current projects in Farmington Hills. We really wanted to put eyes on it and see how they conduct their safety measures. And I was stopped by a gentleman that looks kind of like this, and he's in the audience tonight. And he stopped me dead in my tracks, asked me where my hard hat was, where's my safety vest, and I thought right away like, okay, we got the right people here. So we end up taking a tour of their entire construction site, very safe, cordoned off, the appropriate signage, everybody had the appropriate personal protection equipment, so very gratifying for myself and Mike Vazancow, we were really pleased. And when we went into the building, one major concern we had is the building we went to for a site visit was being phased, as ours is, will be too. And as we walked into the building, you wouldn't even know there was any construction going on. They put up temporary walls, screening, everything you can think of to make sure that the staff working inside was comfortable and didn't even know there was construction going on. So very important for us. Their safety record is far above expectations. This has been reviewed with myself and Mark Karyfell, and Mark was extremely pleased with their safety standards that they have. No OSHA filings or any injuries over the last three years, so a really good safety record, which is extremely important to us. And on the right-hand side, you see the executive team. Half of those folks are here, and I've met half of those folks, which is comforting as well. Very personable people and happy to do the job for us. So that takes us to the timeline. As I mentioned, in January 18, we kind of brought this to the carpet, and we're blessed in November of 2018 to architecturally design this. Bids just came back, we're asking for council's award tonight, and if so, construction would start the end of the summer with a completion time of about 395 days. So with that, the base bid, 18.9, with the alternates, 1.1, for a total tonight on the consent agenda of $20,130,000. But I'll be told, that's not the completed project cost. The completed project cost is about $24.7 million. And if you recall, we did come to council quite some time ago of a notice of intent to not exceed $25 million, so we're pleased to make mention that we did hit that mark. And to get to that number, we still have another summer bid that would be for interior office furnishings, about, we're estimating $450,000. We have, as you see here in contingency, $1.9 million. So we have $2 million in our back pocket for surprises. We've really worked really closely with assistant city manager, city manager, Parks and Rec Director, everybody who's been doing the buildings recently. We've been working very close with all them, and any surprises they had, we've been putting it into our project, so we think we've got everything nailed down, but we're still keeping a couple million dollars in reserve for surprises. The alternates I spoke about that we were not going to award are these three here, two cranes to lift heavy equipment and vehicle hoists. The reason we're not going to award those are because by not awarding those now, we can bid those ourselves competitively, bid that, and save sales tax. So we know by that equipment, purchasing it separately will save hundreds of thousands of dollars in sales tax. And lastly, the A and E fee that I spoke, I spoke about our architect, Cooney Architecture, $950,000. It's already been awarded by council. We've clicked off about 75% of that cost already through this process, so that brings us to the grand total of $24.7 million. So at that, I just wanted to take a moment to express my appreciation for council for considering this option, for allowing us to get to this point. It truly means a lot to myself, it means a lot to the staff that's here, there's a whole group of them that are here that are present. It really truly means a lot to us, we thank you. Those who couldn't make it, they thank you as well too. So very, very humbled that you're even considering this option, and we seek your approval tonight. And with that, I'll pass it over to the Budget and Finance Director, Jennifer Varney.
Wait for it to come back up. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool and Mr. Koszyubski. I just wanted to take a few minutes to explain the financing, the proposed financing of this building. So on tonight's consent agenda also is a bond authorizing resolution, which if approved by council will authorize the city to borrow $25 million by issuing bonds to be paid back over a 20-year period. Due to our high bond rating and a very favorable interest rate environment, we are expecting a very low interest rate of 2.5% or less. And actually, I just saw in the paper today that it looks like the Fed is going to lower interest rates in July, so that may be just in time to help us out even a little more for our bond sale on August 6th. So the bonds, the bond payments will be financed with general fund, and the payment was included, an estimate of the payment was included in the budget that was just approved, and so therefore, there will be no tax increase to finance these bonds. And I know you've seen this chart before, but I just wanted to reiterate that we still have a very low debt margin. You can see here that we are only at 23, with these bonds, we will only be at 23.7% of the amount we are legally able to borrow. So that means, you know, we are less than one quarter of our legal debt limit. And that concludes my short part, and Mike and I are both here for any questions.
And Mayor, before I proceed to the last item of my report, if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. If not, we'll be providing reports throughout the entire project, regular reports to the city council, and periodic updates to the general public as we proceed. So we're looking forward to this project, it's super exciting. I wanted to compliment our DPW director and his entire team, because they have been working diligently on this over the last couple of years, actually. And to get it to this point is, is quite gratifying, and they've done an excellent job.
Council, is there anyone with any questions at this time regarding the DPW building? If not, Mr. Vanderpool?
Okay, Mayor. Lastly, it goes without saying, we have a very important event coming up later this month, and I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to highlight it with the following video.
The last weekend of July makes Sterling Heights and Dodge Park a destination for the Sterling Fest Arts and Music Fair. 2019 Sterling Fest promises to be the best one yet.
Sterling Fest runs from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM on July 25th, 26th, and 27th. Events such as the Henry Ford McCombe Art Fair, the Ford Motor Company Midway, the Bryce Group Jazz and Blues Stage, Fiat Chrysler Restaurant Row, the Genesis Credit Union Kids' Tent, Sterling Fest 5K, and the Suds and Sounds Tent offers something for everyone. The concerts at the AT&amp;T Mainstage will be a key attraction as two major headline acts highlight Friday and Saturday night's festivities. As multi-platinum recording artist Sugar Ray headlines Friday night, and the legendary frontman of Motley Crue, Vince Neil, headlines Saturday night. On Thursday, July 25th, the Mega 80's return to Dodge Park's main stage as the headliner to kick off the weekend of fun. This ultimate tribute to the 1980's puts on a high-energy performance that has won them numerous regional awards. Opening for Mega 80's will be Sterling Heights Parks and Recreation Battle of the Bands winner, Sia Don.
This year sees the addition of fireworks as the Christian Financial Credit Union fireworks takes place Thursday night following the Mega 80's. On Friday night, the world-renowned pop rock band Sugar Ray will fly into Sterling Fest. Sugar Ray's breakthrough hit song, Fly, put them on the map in 1997 and led them to sell more than eight million albums.
Other hit songs from Sugar Ray include When It's Over, Someday, and Every Morning. Sterling Fest gets started on Friday night with Minneapolis pop group, Yum House. And on Saturday night, July 27th, the legendary voice of Motley Crue, Vince Neil, will kickstart Dodge Park's heart.
Vince Neil's unmistakable voice leads some of the greatest rock songs of all time, including Wild Side, Shout at the Devil, Home Sweet Home, Girls, 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 Doctor Feelgood, Kickstart My Heart, Same Old Situation, and many more.
Opening for Vince Neil will be one of the best up-and-coming bands in the area, Eva Under Fire.
Sterling Fest is July 25th, 26th, and 27th. For more information, visit sterlingfest.info.
We look forward to seeing everyone there. I just checked the national weather forecast, mid-80's and mostly sunny all three days. So, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda tonight is a presentation, and this is to, speaking of Sterling Fest, to acknowledge and accept donations to the 2019 Sterling Fest Art and Music Fair by AT&amp;T, Christian Financial Credit Union, FCA US LLC, and Ford Motor Company in the cumulative amount of $40,000. I will hand it over to our city manager, again, Mark Vanderpool, to conduct the presentation. Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you, Mayor. Continuing on this exciting topic, each year, Community Relations reaches out to many local businesses throughout the city and the region for their support in Sterling Fest. These donations helped offset the costs of the entire event, and many of you may have heard from our previous presentations that the cost to put on Sterling Fest is around $450,000, but we do have offsetting revenues of over $300,000 to help offset those overall costs. And obviously, the sponsorships are a big part of that. I'm proud to say that this year, we've cumulated, cumulatively so far, received more than $117,000. We're on pace to exceed last year, including four very large donations, $10,000 from, each from AT&amp;T, Christian Financial Credit Union, FCA, and Ford Motor Company. City's extremely grateful for these generous donations and will properly identify all the companies with large signage at, as well as other placement with their logos throughout the entire event. So in line with our administrative procedure and policy order regarding contributions, any donation over $10,000 must be accepted by the city council. Due to the very busy schedule of corporations over the summer months, most were not able to attend this evening. However, I would like to invite Kaylee, well, actually, Ashley May, from Christian Financial Credit Union, who's going to present city council with the $10,000 check this evening, which will fortunately fund almost all of our firework display on Thursday evening. So we're incredibly grateful for their donation. I'd like to introduce Ashley.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us to the Sterling Heights City Council meeting. It's our pleasure to be here today. We are excited to be sponsoring the Sterling Heights fireworks for the second year. We are excited to be sponsoring the Sterling Heights fireworks for the second year. One of our core philosophies is people helping people. What a better way to exhibit this philosophy by investing into the community of Sterling Heights. This fall, Christian Financial will be opening our new headquarters at Fifteen Mile in Van Dyke in Sterling Heights. Our new headquarters will not only house the place where our employees will work, but will also have a community walking trail, picnic areas and apple trees for the community to enjoy. For many years, Christian Financial Credit Union has partnered with the city of Sterling Heights to bring different programs and events to Sterling Heights residents. We look forward to our continued partnership for the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor and council, if you don't mind going to the front of the dais, and we have a check that we'd like to present to you.
Okay, thank you very much to all the sponsors, particularly Christian Financial for being here. Counsel, we have a resolution?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarowski?
Resolve to acknowledge and accept donations of ten thousand dollars each by AT&amp;T, Christian Financial Credit Union, FCA US LLC and Ford Motor Company to the two hundred, two thousand nineteen Sterling Fest Art and Music Fair.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Again, just thank you very much for your continued support. Sterling Fest is one of the most anticipated events for us every year, and I know it is for our residents as well. It was recently voted as the top summer festival in Metro Detroit, and it's going to be even bigger and better this year. The fireworks was one of the biggest events of the summer last year, and I'm anticipating that this Thursday, it's going to be, the next, you know, next Thursday, it's going to be incredibly, incredible there at Sterling Fest. And so we can't wait, really looking forward to it. So with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and thank you again for your support. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, and this is to consider the application by HTI Cybernetics Incorporated for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate at four zero zero three three Mitchell Drive. We have a presentation from our senior economic development advisor, Luke Bonner. Mr. Bonner?
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Mr. Vanderpool and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to present another exciting project in the city. Before you tonight is consideration for an industrial facilities exemption certificate for HTI Cybernetics, the latest addition to Sterling Enterprise Park. They have a, under construction right now, a hundred and ninety thousand square foot headquarters, manufacturing and research and development facility. That is ultimately around a fifteen million dollar investment, and they will add fifty new jobs to the community to go along with the eighty they have currently had. This helps HTI position themselves for future expansion with new business coming in and also a consolidation of multiple other locations that they have across the community. HTI has been in front of the city a number of times in the past. They've been operating in the city for about, about twenty years or so. And the one thing that I always remember about HTI is back around two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when things were really tough, HTI was the only company in the community that qualified for a tool-and-die recovery zone, which gave them tax-exempt status for a certain period of time, which was a very tough time. And even as part of their petition for that, they did say, you know, these are the types of things that we need to continue to move forward and stay profitable and continue to be successful in the city. And I think that history and track record with a company like this really pays off when it's time for them to make a decision of, do we invest fifteen million dollars in new headquarters in the community or go elsewhere? The project itself is under consideration for a twelve-year term, which is eligible under our tax abatement guidelines. They will be generating roughly fifty-six thousand dollars a year annually in city taxes, which equates to six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars over a twelve-year period of time. The current property only yields about twelve thousand five hundred dollars a year, so there's about a, almost a five times return on investment in support of this tax abatement. And based on the jobs that they're creating, we're anticipating about a nine million dollar local economic impact based on the jobs and the anticipated wages. I'd like to invite up at this time Eric McAlexander, who's the current CEO of HTI Cybernetics, who has also awarded a Sterling Edge Award this year as well for their investment in the community. Eric, come up and say a few words about the company, please.
Thanks, Luke, and thanks, Mayor and city council members. A little bit about HTI, you probably know the company quite well, at least many of you do. We've been in business since nineteen eighty-three and in fact have been operating solely in Sterling Heights since late two thousand, so as Luke said, almost twenty years. We are a supplier to the tier-one automotive suppliers as well as the OEMs. Our primary products are robotic assembly equipment and general assembly tooling. We've had a long relationship with the city of Sterling Heights, certainly the city and the council and the mayors historically have given us great support as we've expanded throughout the years. And that's why we're here today, because we want to continue to expand. Our business is doing well, and we're looking to do much greater things over the next few years. So while we've had great support from the city council certainly, we've also find that we have great access to great employees. The vast majority of the employees at HTI are skilled trades and highly technical people. We have pipe fitters, we have electricians, we have welders, we have machinists. We also employ robot programmers, we employ controls designers, we employ mechanical designers, pneumatic designers, so lots of engineers. And again, the vast majority of our people are highly skilled people in the community. So we have great access to people. We also have great access to our supply base for raw material and services. We have many outsourced engineering services at times we need, and the availability of those services certainly within just a few mile radius of here is extremely good for us, and as well as just materials that we need to buy our jobs from. So the vast majority, again, of our outside spend does come through the Sterling Heights area as well as a radius of about twenty-five to thirty miles from here. So it's, to us, it's just a perfect place to do business. As Luke has said, we currently occupy about a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet in two locations. We're looking to consolidate those locations into this Mitchell Drive facility. It's a beautiful new facility in the, in the Sterling Enterprise Park. The facility will be just under a hundred and ninety thousand square feet, and we'll be able to bring all of our people, engineers, the technicians on the shop floor, everybody will be able to move and work together under one roof. So it's our expectation to be able to provide not only the efficiencies to the company of doing that, but a much, much better customer experience as well. So I'm here to answer any questions, if there are any questions, but certainly thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak a little bit about who we are and what we're doing. I should not, I would be remiss in not repeating what Luke's already said. Over the next three years, we do anticipate this to add about fifty jobs to the community. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much, sir. We'll open up a public hearing, and then when the council is in deliberations, if we have any questions, we'll call you back up. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Resolve to adopt the resolution approving the applications of HTI Cybernetics Incorporated for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate at four zero zero three three Mitchell Drive, parcel number five dash ten dash ten dash sixteen dash four five one dash zero zero four. For a period of twelve years, in accordance with the guidelines established by the city council and the mayor and the city clerk, are hereby authorized to sign, as applicable, all documents required in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
I have really just one question to the petitioner. And that would be, first of all, I'm grateful that, for the patience that you've shown as far as through the hard times, and you're still here, and I'm glad we could help you before, and you're helping us again. Skilled trades are so important, and I just wanted to know, do you have an apprenticeship program through your company that some, you know, as we start to train people that might be in high school, that are in high school and maybe think that they want to go into some kind of skilled trade? Do you have any training like that in your facility?
We have training, but it's not, it's not what I would consider an apprenticeship program. Having said that, the competition for employees at the skill level we need is great. I've had discussion with Camille and some other people from the state as well as from the local community about how we can start setting up apprenticeship programs. We do support on an annual basis Manufacturing Day, where we have high school people come into the facility, learn more about what we do, try to get young people interested in this type of work because it's, I mean, it's just fantastic work. I don't think they realize the challenge and the stimulation that people can, can get out of work like this. So specifically apprenticeship at this time, no. Is it under strong consideration for us to do, to do just that? Yes.
And the reason why I say that is, I think we went through that era where we thought everybody should go to college, everybody needs to go to college. And I think we've learned that college isn't for everybody. And now we're at, we're at a limited amount of skilled tradesmen, and so that's why I'm glad that it's, we're starting to regenerate that workforce.
I think so, too. And as you know, when I came through school, there were trade schools. So a lot of people learned to be a metal worker or an electrician through going to trade schools. So I'm glad to see that, that companies are starting to take these types of programs back on.
And I'm appreciative of the fifty new jobs that will be created at this new facility. The only other question I have is, the two buildings that you're vacating, you probably will not have any problem filling them if they are your buildings, but is that the, is that what you expect to do?
We have, both the buildings are leased buildings, so we do expect at this point in time to be able to either sublease. One of the building, the lease expires at the end of March twenty twenty, so we will remain in that building until that point in time and then move. The other building, we still have about six years remaining on the lease, so we're working with the landlord either to sublease or find a new tenant that would be willing to take on a new master lease. And we do have several very interested parties, yes.
And I would think that you do because there's such a limited amount of space in Sterling Heights anymore for manufacturing, so. But no, thank you for being patient with us, and thank you for this investment that you're making into this city.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Mr. Schmidt, anything?
Nothing further.
Counsel, open it up. Any other comments, questions? I would just say thank you and, you know, good luck at this new facility, and we do appreciate your investment here in the city of Sterling Heights. So with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda, thank you. Next item on our agenda tonight is, I believe, an ordinance introduction. And this is to introduce an ordinance amending chapter two of the city code to create a youth advisory board. We have a presentation from our assistant city attorney, Nathan Petrusak. Mr. Petrusak?
Good evening, Mayor Kaylee, council members and Mr. Vanderpool. I'm here this evening for Don Denault. He had intended on making this presentation this evening, but he unfortunately suffered a death in the family and he was not able to be here. After the strategic planning earlier this year, we were tasked with developing a proposed ordinance amendment to create a youth advisory board that would help spur youth involvement in the city, in city government specifically, as well as provide a mechanism for youth of the city to take a more active role in shaping the city's policies, events and programs. The ordinance being introduced tonight, we believe incorporates the best practices from other, other local governments that we have researched, which have created similar boards, and it's also designed to fit the specific needs and goals of the city of Sterling Heights. With respect to the proposed ordinance amendment, there are a number of aspects that I would like to highlight for you. First, the ordinance creates a youth advisory board with the specific goals and purposes such as facilitating involvement in local government and providing insight, feedback and recommendations from a youth perspective to city council. Second, the size of the board is set at fifteen members appointed by council each year in June. Third, the board is comprised of members who are high school students ages fourteen to eighteen from a wide range of backgrounds and interests with a minimum grade point average of three point oh, or a middle school equivalent for an incoming high school freshman. Fourth, each member's term would be for one year with parental release being required to serve. Fifth, each member may be, may be reappointed for consecutive terms or council could appoint new members each year. Sixth, the city manager and the community relations director will design the application process, and applicants will be interviewed and ranked based on a specific set of criteria. Seventh, the board will meet at least once a month during the school year at either city hall or another city facility so that city staff is available to provide assistance to the board. Eighth, the meeting of the board, they won't be subject to the Open Meetings Act, but the board will have at least one public meeting year to review its accomplishments and ideas and to hear from the public. Ninth, the summary, a summary of the board's accomplishments will be presented to council each year during the summer months. And finally, the board will have specific objectives culminating in recommendations to council and the city manager pertaining to youth-related issues in the city and in creating and maintaining a three-year action plan for council to consider. And with that, I am available if you have any questions concerning the proposed ordinance amendment.
Okay, thank you very much. We will call you back up if you have any questions. We'll open it up to the audience. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Mrs. Early?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I do have a few questions. Since this is for youth, my son is in that age range, I had a couple of questions. One, is this a non-partition group? Is this, anybody can apply? Or if I ask my son if he wants to be part of this, will you appoint him? I know myself, I had asked several times to be appointed to board and commissions, and that had been denied. Will he be able to participate in that groups, group? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Early. Anyone else on this item? Mr. Cavalli?
I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak, as always, but this is a fantastic idea. Where was this six or seven years ago? When I was in that age group, not sure, but this is a great idea. It's a really great idea to get more youth involved in politics, and honestly, I'm very, very supportive of this. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Resolve to introduce the ordinance amending chapter two of the city code to create a youth advisory board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
I have nothing at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Mrs. Schmidt, anything?
I do have one question through the chair to, I'm not sure who can answer this, but who would be the city liaison for this group?
Mr. Petrusak?
Currently, the, the proposed ordinance amendment has written, the city, the liaison for the group would be the community, community relations director or the designee of that department.
Okay. Like as much as some of our other advisory committees, community relations are the liaison, so that's what I was looking for. I, I think that's all the questions I have for you. I am very excited about this. We have had a youth advisory committee in the past. Unfortunately, it kind of fizzled out on us, so I'm, I'm excited to see this come back into, into action here, and hopefully there will be a lot of good discussions amongst the group and suggestions for the city council. And I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Koszukski?
I just want to share a little information with, with council. A number of years back, Councilman Nelson and myself brought forth an idea of creating a teen council. a teen council, which was supervised by the Parks and Rec Department. Apparently, we didn't set it up quite right, because the participation that we had was somewhere between seven and 12 students, from what I can remember. They attended a number of meetings and then kind of lost interest, so it kind of fizzled. So I have a couple of suggestions that hopefully council will consider working into this ordinance, or into the way this is set up. Our original idea was to approach the teachers at the different schools, the schools that Sterling Heights residents, or I should say Sterling Heights children attended, to ask for recommendation from the teachers. Now, this would include ninth through 12th grade, asking the teacher to recommend or to encourage their students, maybe two, three students, to submit an application. That way, let's assume that if we had five schools participating, and we took one student from each grade level, we would have 20 on the board. I think we should have more than 15, because they're not going to be able to attend every single meeting. So if we went for 20 on the board, I think would give us a better advantage of having more of attendance. The other thought is, I know we're asking for a 3.0 grade point average. Some students may not be good at taking tests, or good at achieving that 3.0, but they may be very creative, they may have great ideas, and I think they also should have the opportunity to apply for the position. So that's my recommendation. I think we should open it up a little bit more. I really and truly would like to see this program succeed. I thought it was a great idea a number of years back, we just didn't do it right. So this time, I'm asking that we open it up a little bit more. Hopefully, we'll get some good participation and get some students that really have some great ideas for the city and what our youth need. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke. Thank you, Mrs. Kosky, for your wonderful suggestions. I think they're very good. I know that I had previously sent an email to administration asking for the GPA requirement to be lowered to 2.5. Most students have to play sports at 2.0. I think 2.5, which is a B-, I hope you're doing a little bit better than that, but some kids just are not good at books, but they can be good at painting, or school, or other activities that I think would benefit the council. So do I have to make a friendly amendment to change that requirement, or what would be the best procedure to do it?
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilman Radke, if there's consensus to do that, we can go back, look at it, and when it comes back for adoption, have it adjusted.
Well, without objection, I'd like to lower it to 2.5.
Anyone object to lowering it to 2.5? All right. I think that you've got consensus there. And while I'm at it, Mrs. Kosky, do you want to ask for the same on adjusting the number from 15 to 20?
Yes, please.
Is there any objection to adjusting the number upward to 20 instead of 15? Mrs. Zarco?
I don't have an objection, but I do have a question. Because this is an advisory board, do they have to meet these quorum standards in order to meet, or if we, they do? So that's why I'm thinking that the more people you have, the chances are you might not, you might have 12 that don't show up.
Could we lower the quorum number?
Okay. Mrs. Zarco, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Radke asked if the quorum could be reduced.
Put the quorum at 10, but we could have 20 members.
Is that an idea, Mr. Kosky?
I'll have to research that and get back to you on that one, Mayor.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we have a couple options? I think, do you need any further direction on that? You've got a good grasp of what the council's considerations are and what we'd like to see, so, okay.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, I agree with Mrs. Kosky's recommendation. Could we work a, for recommendations that, just have a minimum number of recommendations for our public high schools? I mean, I don't want to, to separate out, I think people from all our high schools, both private and public, should be able to attend, but if we could ask for each high school to give us two recommendations, for example, that would at least create a pool of students recommended by teachers that we could approach even, to be there, rather than us just having an open, open application process, because I know for some of our commissions, like the Historical Commission, we have a open process, but for, you know, for your average high school student, how often do they go onto our website and really find out about this process?
Mr. Koszy, any ideas there?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, my, our thought process was that we would approach all of the school districts, try to work with the history teachers, the government teachers. Maybe they'd want to offer extra credit for those who would join, try to promote the program. But we didn't want to necessarily put a quota on any particular high school, or any particular type of school, because you have homeschooled children, high schools that are private and public, and we wanted to get a good cross-section of the entire community. And with a board of this size, we really need to try to garner that much support from all.
Right. That's why I asked. I have, I'm trying to, way to get the applications to us, is what my goal is right here.
Right. And the idea would be to seek out recommendations as part of the application process, which will be developed going forward.
Okay. I'm in support of this. I think this is going to be a wonderful addition to our city, to give feedback. I mean, I've learned so much from the youth of our city, including how much they like the skate park, which I didn't think that they would, but they are out there every day. It's raining today, so not, but any other day, they would be. So I'm in support, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else? Mrs. Sarowski?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So I also do agree with the lowering of the GPA, which of course you have gotten consensus for, but I, in working with the government teachers from the schools and all the districts that would affect Sterling Heights students, or resident students that live in Sterling Heights. But I do think it is important to note that we would still have, and I'm going to assume this, but I'm asking, it's also kind of a question, we are still going to have open applications for any student that may want to. So it's not going to be just on a recommendation of a teacher. So it could be any person's child, or any person's grandchild, niece, or nephew. So it is open, and it is meant to include them into the government process, but still we have to keep a limited number, so it would be, I don't know, you know, we'll have to figure out how that would go, as far as actually, depending on numbers, how we weed those out, or I don't like to call them weeds, or children, how we sift those through. So, very good. So I'm also tremendously in favor of this. If, being in this position has taught me anything, it's how little our children and our students have actually been taught about government, and that transcends into the adults, not really understanding what a city manager government, form of government is, as opposed to a strong mayor form of government. So it's really important to bring in the children now, and they can learn from example, and they can learn hands-on. So I very much support this.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. Sarowski. Some in the news don't even know the difference.
Mayor Taylor.
Okay, Mrs. Zarco.
As far as, okay, I guess if somebody could explain to me why we wouldn't handle the applications for this particular advisory committee the same way we handle any other application. I guess, you know, a teacher recommendation would be nice, but many times, you know, there's people out there that are interested, and if they feel they have to get somebody's approval, they won't even apply. So I guess what would make this, this commission different than other commissions? Then why couldn't we just do, let, you know, youth know that this is what we're planning to do? Maybe do, have the teachers in their classroom say something about it, but not necessarily say that they have to have a teacher recommendation? I mean, I just think, open it up, because there, you know, we've had kids that have come here that are valedictorians, but don't attend, you know, a school within the city limits, so, but they are a resident of the city. So I think it's important to open it up to all youth.
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. I guess it's me now.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
My intent was not to just take teachers' recommendation, but getting the children to apply. And one way would be to have the teachers say, "Students, the city is establishing a youth advisory board. I'm communicating to you, do you want to join? If you want to join, come see me after class. I will gather your information, help you fill out an application, and submit it to the city." That's what I was referring to, because our problem before was lack of participation, lack of getting the information out. Children are supposed to go to school. They have their teachers. Sometimes if the teacher tells them about a board and say, "It's a good thing, hey, I'll give you extra credit if you go," we'll get better participation. That's all I was looking for. Anybody can apply, but get the teachers to participate, to get more to apply.
Okay.
That was my point.
Yeah, I think those are great ideas, and I don't know that we necessarily need to do anything formal, or make it a formal requirement of the application process, or even, or even suggest that. But what I will say is that, you know, I think probably, do you remember about when that youth council was created? You said sometime in the 90s?
Yes. It was when Ken Nelson and I were on council together.
Okay. Well, Ken just tweeted me, and he said he was in the, it was in the 90s sometime, so coincidentally, he did just yesterday. I was in high school in the 90s, in the late 90s, and I kind of just remember that around that time, you wanted to supplement your college applications with a lot of extracurriculars, but if you were on the football team, and if you were in the band, and if you did National Honor Society, that was pretty much it, and you didn't really have to go too much farther beyond that. And in the last 20 years, it's really gotten a lot more competitive. And I don't think we're going to struggle to find people that want to, kids that want to be a part of this. I think we're frankly going to have more applicants than we need, and we're going to have a very competitive process, because a city of our size, with, you know, with three high schools, and then you've got kids going to De La Salle, and Brother Rice, and Lutheran North, and Parkway, and, yeah, all these different, you know, and the homeschool, there's going to be a lot of very motivated kids out there that are, that are going to be interested in serving on this. So I think that it'll be, it'll be a very competitive one, actually, and I think that'll be great, because it'll, it'll help us to make sure that we, we're hearing that voice, and we're getting that leadership. This, the Conference of Mayors, which you all know I'm very involved in, and, and I'm excited to be a part of, is hosting actually a Mayor's Youth Summit in Los Angeles, and unfortunately, it's the same weekend as the, as Sterling Fest, but it's, it's all expenses paid. They pay for your flight, your hotel, and your conference there, and they want mayors around the country to bring two members of the youth community to come out and, you know, help, help shape policy, and help shape, you know, local policies, because, you know, it's very important to hear those voices and to have, have that direct pipeline right to our local government. So this is going to be a great way to get our, our younger members of the community engaged, get them, hopefully to become civic-minded, understand what, what we do here as a city, and I think it's, it's a really wonderful thing that I'm excited that we're going to be, be having in the city, and hopefully, we can, we can create a program that will be a model for others around the, around the region, and even the country, perhaps. So I'm really looking forward to seeing how this takes shape, and it's something I'm going to be keeping close tabs on, and so I know, you know, there's a memory I have, one time, seems like once a year, twice a year, kids have come to the council meetings because they have to satisfy some requirement of class, and one year, we had all these kids here in the trash contract, the trash hauling contract was up, and they all come up and start talking about recycling. I was like, you know, there's issues that are affecting your life that you would want to be, you could have a real impact on if you just came out and told us what you think. And so I'm excited about that opportunity for a lot of kids, and think this will be great. So anything else, any other suggestions before we vote? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Very exciting. Thank you to our DPW employees here. Thank you, Mr. Moore, for your presentation earlier today. This is a really incredible thing that we're going to have. I mean, you guys deserve a first-class facility. You guys do tremendous work. We get kudos from, from residents all the time about the way that the city looks, the way that, you know, things that you don't think about, you know, making sure your water's turned on every day, making sure that it's clean, making sure that you're not having sewage backed up, and when it is, it's taken care of. Water main breaks are fixed quickly. We have some of the best roads in terms of our salting and our snow plowing, and constantly hearing from residents about how our roads look much clearer than anyone else's, and so this, I think, is going to even help you guys do a better job to serve the residents, so thank you very much. You guys deserve it, and we're looking forward to that new DPW building. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is to consider nominations to City of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, we have, this one is going to be, we've got Board of Ordinance Appeals, one, one alternate, two, and two alternate. So we'll take these one at a time, because we really can't take them cumulatively. So is there anyone who has a nomination for the Ordinance Board of Appeals, one?
Mayor Taylor.
Ms., Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you. Resolve to nominate James Mandl for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Ordinance Appeals, one, at the August 6, 2019 Regular City Council Meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Sure, Mayor Taylor. I happen to know Mr. Mandl, and he's a very concerned resident about blight in our, in our city. I think he would be an awesome addition to this board, and he's eager to serve, and I welcome giving him the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else, counsel? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the nomination to the Board of Ordinance Appeals, one alternate. Is there anyone who has a nomination?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I'd like to nominate Justin Smith to the Ordinance Board of Appeals, one alternate.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Radke.
Resolve to nominate Justin Smith for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Ordinance Appeals, one, alternate, at the August 6, 2019 Regular City Council Meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mr. Radke?
I've talked with Mr. Smith. He's a teacher in Warren Consolidated Schools. He just got his master's degree. He's also a licensed realtor, and he cares a lot about how our properties appear in the city, and how, how they look, and he's, he's, he told me personally, he's a young guy, he's about 23, 24 years old, that he wants to get involved in government, and I thought this would be a perfect opportunity for him.
All right. Very good. Any other discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the nomination to the Board of Ordinance Appeals, two. Is there anyone who has a nomination there?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve to nominate Roman Stojalowski for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Ordinance Appeals, two, at the August 6, 2019 Regular City Council Meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Last on this item is the nomination to Board of Ordinance Appeals, two alternate. Is there anyone who has a nomination for this position?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve to nominate Ben McMartin for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Ordinance Appeals, two, alternate, at the August 6, 2019 Regular City Council Meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
From our packet, it said that Mr. McMartin had previously served on the board, and he's willing to serve as an alternate if needed. So I think that'd be perfect.
Yep. Very good. Any further discussion? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Moving on to the next item on our agenda tonight, this is also to consider appointments[1763.95] this is also to consider appointments to Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we have two openings, one for the Historical Commission, and one for the Solid Waste Commission. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion for the Historical Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I gotta find my right place, I'm sorry. Resolved to appoint Brian Wojcowski to the Historical Commission, to a term ending June 30, 2022, so to the appointee meeting and qualification set forth in Charter Section 4.03, taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
From our staff report, Brian has been volunteering with the Historical Commission without being on it for some time. He's very interested, and I'd love to give him a chance to further serve.
Okay. Counsel, anyone else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And finally, we have the Solid Waste Management Commission. One opening, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to appoint Nathan Inks to the Solid Waste Management Commission, to a term ending June 30, 2022, so to the appointee meeting, the qualification set forth in Charter Section 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yes, please.
Mr. Radke.
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Inks. He's, he's an attorney, and he's very interested in getting involved in government. He's interested in not only solid waste management, but also conservation, and hopefully creating a recycling committee or something like that, a sustainability committee, excuse me. I think he'd be a great addition to the Solid Waste Management Commission.
Okay. Anyone else, council? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. And we'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to participate? If not, I'll close that portion. And, okay. Everybody's got to be last.
First of all, Mr. Vanderpool, did you happen to put in that ride-share stand, cab stand at Sterling Fest that's coming up this, this week? It was desperately needed last year because it was hard for us people who are in that industry to get to where the people were. So that, Mr. Vanderpool, Carmax on Hall Road there, what's the plan for when that's supposed to come in, into Sterling Heights? Braylow's, how long is that place supposed to stay in there before something gets done about it? It's been a few years now. We don't want that to look like pings on a fair night. Another thing here, I'm off of Mr. Vanderpool now, we need to come up with some kind of plan. Because this happened last year with, at the last time the election time cycle was around, that people were going after, or asking people about their, their taxes. We need to come up with some kind of plan to see if we want to make those public or not. That was from Mayor Taylor. Mayor Taylor also asked me earlier, I remember telling her that she was wasting her time and money running. So we, it needs to be discussed, because that is a big issue around here these days. Mayor Taylor, Mike Radke, no matter how you look at it, again, the only place you're getting off with offended people here in this country is right here in Sterling Heights, as we've seen over the last few days. You guys need to handle that. Like I said, a lot of people was offended when that first came out. Don't pretend like no one knows what I'm talking about. Everybody know what I'm talking about. That rat on, that sort of planning, commissioning on the certified emergency response team, who offended a great majority of the people here in Sterling Heights. He needs to be dealt with, like we're dealing with the rest, like other people to be dealt with in this country. Mike Radke, you sit up there, you went after Ms. Early, but then again, you stood up for those ladies who went after the president. Can't have it both ways, big fella. Stand up all the time, but don't stand up at no time. Now again, you guys going after Ms. Early, I don't know if you guys noticed, but when Ms. Early set her mind or something, she moves people, and she gets them down here. So I would suggest you guys leave her alone before she gets a lot of people to really notice what's going on with you people. The last few weeks, they noticed you, Mike Taylor, and your comments that you make on the internet, the comments, and the way you talk to people, and the way you put people down. People starting to notice. So there you have it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
In regards to the youth thing that you just voted on and did through, you have a great vehicle in Sterling Fest, to have something there that you can talk to people through that thing. I mean, that, that's a great avenue right there that would help you. It's your biggest event of the year. Why wouldn't you want to have someone there talking about this there? And thank you for lowering the grade point average. Because I, as a student, I was an average to below-average student. And that was partly because of philosophies that were taken that backfired on people. And that I could have been a better student than I was, but it was just what it was. And I just, I think that would be a good way to advertise it, is something like that. Or at a farmer, or at the farmer's market. Have somebody at the farmer's market. And that would be a way, a good way to get people involved in that respect. Oh, and I live in Sterling Heights, north of 14 Mile, and I've been a resident for 27 years straight. Nancy Hawke, by the way.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else? Mrs. Early.
Within the game, Mayor, city council members, and audience, on behalf of the Patriotic Week Foundation, I'm here to, as you, Mayor, the city council, and Mr. Vanderpool, and our attorney, if you could please recognize the days of September 11 to September 17 as Patriotic Week in Sterling Heights. Creating a resolution, a letter of support, or just a public statement will be sufficient. We need to renew the spirit. We were talking about that when you mentioned the youth advisory board. And through this renewal of the spirit of America, it will be a great opportunity for our city to join the other cities around the county, state, and country that are already doing it. This Patriotic Week Foundation will be working with me and any of you, if you are willing to work with us, organizing a few events in the city. We already had the ceremony on September 11. Every day, there will be a plan to do something different, if you choose to. Please consider recognizing that week. We will appreciate it, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. I hope that you consider this. We are early to be able to prepare. It doesn't need to be those fancy events, anything that we can help our community to recover the spirit of America. And with this youth advisory board, it will be great to include them at a future role that they will play in our city. I also want to remind the residents to come to the Sterling Heights Festival. The citizens for emergency, sorry, the city emergency response team will be there. We will have a table. And also, the Free Drug Coalition will have information for the residents to have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Early. Anyone else under Communications from Citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, go on to Reports from City Administration. Anything tonight, Mr. Vanderpool?
Mayor, I just wanted to mention that at Sterling Fest, we will have a designated ride-share drop-off and pickup at Stevenson High School. We'll have adequate signage indicating such.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Kachubski?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counsel, any reports or new business?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I just had two brief questions, or comments through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. One, could we either here or in the next meeting, talk about the Tim Hortons that we've gotten a lot of complaints about on Shaner, just south of 14 Mile, or 15 Mile, excuse me, between 15 and 14? I've had multiple emails about that. I know that they stopped construction, but now hopefully they're continuing, and they can update the residents would be appropriate. And also, I was hoping at the next meeting, we could have our Parks Recreation Director attend and give an update on our parks improvements, the final parks improvements, to the residents, because I've been getting a lot of emails and calls about kayaking, and then improvements that were supposed to be made to Moravian Park and other parks. I want to make sure that they know the timetable because of the weather and construction.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mr. Vanderpool, anything on that?
Sure, Mayor. Just a preliminary response on the Tim Hortons project over at Moravian and Shaner. It's been delayed, obviously, for quite some time now. However, we just received today a new construction schedule. I've not had the opportunity to review it in any detail, but I'll be happy to share the updated construction schedule with city council. Obviously, we don't control the dynamics of financing and funding and franchisees and franchisors. But we do know that the project is going to be moving forward, and hopefully will be completed under the new time schedule. And I'll be sure to provide an update at the next city council meeting, as Councilman Radke suggested. In addition, it certainly would be helpful if our Parks Rec Director gave another update on where we're at. We're in the home stretch of all of our recreating recreation projects, so we'll be happy to share an update.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Sarowski.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. And just another note about Sterling Fest, I do want, of course, encourage everyone to come out for Sterling Fest, all three days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Saturday morning, however, there will be some members, possibly of council, in the dunk tank, for those of you who are interested in taking out your aggressions for a good cause. It's being supported and promoted by the wives of the Sterling Heights police officers, and it's for multiple charities that they help fund and support. So I encourage everyone to come out and get your arms ready to go. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Sarowski. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
So what time are you in the dunk tank?
I haven't signed up yet. You never sign up. I just thought about that. I got a couple emails.
Oh, but they've got you planned.
Don't worry, you'll get your chance.
Maybe we can advertise that time once you've committed to it.
You always do.
Doesn't he get double time?
Barb put like 200 bucks into it last time.
I just want to make sure you raise the most money. That's my goal.
That's very sweet of you.
I think you dunked them too, didn't you?
Yeah, a few times. Who's counting?
All right. Anyone else?
I have nothing further.
Thank you very much for that, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone else? If not, yeah, I don't have anything but to say. Sterling Fest, a week from Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. We always appreciate all the support from the community. It's going to be another great year, I think, this year. So we hope to see you all out there. And if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
It was moved and supported. No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.